... United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, and is the law, liberty, and justice for all.
Would you be standing and remember our men and women in the armed forces? Thank you. Clerk, if at this time we could, uh, the public hearing has remained open. And so, uh, we'll start it tonight at whatever time it is now. I guess it's a little after seven. Again, a public comment. Anyone who hasn't spoken that would like to speak?
A motion made?
Um, I was thinking about that. It's our, I can take, will take a motion. Never hurts to have a motion to open up the public hearing that was left open from the last meeting. Could I have a motion?
So I'll make a motion to suspend regular business and open up, uh, continue the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion. Anyone would like to speak?
I have a question.
Just give your name.
Kamel Mary, I have, uh, just getting more done, I have a question. Do we still have B two or B two is gone or stealing and B three?
We have B two. We're trying to eliminate B three.
You are trying to eliminate B three?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so now what, I guess what's left is anyone who asked about their writing?
No, I didn't, I didn't look at your.
Okay, okay, okay.
I've been coming to meetings and listening to all this, uh, run out type of, uh, par eye.
Cause we're gonna review all these comments. Good, thank you.
Um, I want to ask the board a question here. Where do we live? The village of dreams? I mean, if you build it, they will come? Is that what you believe? Do you think changing the business district will revive the village? Only if you give, only if you give these developers what they want. And it makes me wonder who and what is getting what they want. Sorry, there's some noise behind me. When you look at the applications for the New York Forward grant money, almost all of it was for village residents who want to improve their properties. It was oversubscribed and as the state wants it to do. To me, the only changes I see on the comprehensive plan are to the business district. What about changes to the residential district? The zoning changes need to include the residential zoning. We are a village with no industries, a residential community. I appeal the, uh, New York State, uh, plus one ABU program, uh, which would allow residents to convert a garage, convert upstairs to an accessory dwelling unit. And there would be grant money for these, uh, property owners to make this, uh, this change to their property of up to $125,000. And I think, I think that the, there'd be a lot of people in this community who would do it. Now, you should allow local residents to convert a single family home to have accessory The only R districts that we really use are R four, which is two family, R five and R five and six. I was looking at my, I couldn't even see on R six. Non-conforming lots should have building parameters to allow that lot to be developed. Why are there no changes to the residential district? Again, we're a residential community. If we have more residential development, there'll be more resident buying from the local businesses. And this will allow Main Street to clutter. You heard from the Chamber of Commerce at the last board meeting, Dean Moreno stated that the chamber's members say that there is not enough foot traffic. Changing only the business zone will not help with these issues. So, couple of questions. I've heard from, uh, trustee Carroll about zoning enforcement. I'm not reading any or hearing any solutions. Uh, what about Airbnb? I'm not hearing anything about Airbnb, uh, you know, it's, you know, Airbnb is a whole new industry. And for them to be, for regular industry, they want to be taxed. And you're not doing anything about it. To me, the bottom line is go slow. Go slow in the business district. See what gets developed with any changes that you make. Like go faster in the, in the residential district. Help local residents increase their property values. Change the comprehensive plan to increase property values for the local people of the community, not for out of town developers. So many communities get zoning wrong and it only stagnifies the community. Not allowing it to grow to be what it could or should be as determined by the marketplace and the residents. Thank you for listening.
We have all those comments then. Anyone else?
I wish. Back. Ned Copeland, with regard to property 189 Main Street and the contiguous block to my office, I dropped off a copy of a letter.
We have it here. I was gonna read it. It's up to you.
That's fine. I'd ask that it remain, I.
Oh, absolutely.
Exhibit of the, you know, of the here. To change to residential from the existing business that was considered in 2020, uh, less than five years ago, is a drastic and, uh, an unwides effort, I believe. In effect, you would be taking businesses such as Yale Office Building, uh, the Mexican Restaurant, Hogan's, and all the way down.
Up to its offices.
To the Mormon Church and making them residential substantially affects the value of those persons' properties. And should those properties, uh, become demolished or substantially damaged by fire, by weather, things like that, their ability to rebuild is questionable. They would, under many circumstances, have to rebuild on a rec, with a residence only. In addition, on the east side of the road, uh, the same effect from Havens Road down to the old bowling alley, you have businesses there, My Town Market, West Point Hotel, all the way to, whether it includes the, uh, the old bowling alley, I'm not quite sure. To make that side all residential is equally, I think, very ill advised, not just for the owners, but for the community, for growth, for business, to deal with taxes that have become too great for many, uh, long time residents. So I'd ask you, before acting on this, to take these considerations.
We will.
Seriously. Initially, on page two, at the bottom of the village, entered up, we don't know what Frankly, uh, I find it difficult to fully understand what it is intended to say, but it appears to me to be saying that we would have residential living on the first floor on Main Street, which, uh, I think would be very ill advised.
I agree.
So, uh, those are my comments. If I may, it might be for your willingness to read.
Yeah.
But if I may, I'll read it, uh, to the, uh, those, uh, for the mayor of the village board of trustees.
Ned, could you speak up a little bit? I can't really hear you. Mic is on.
Speak into the mic.
Thank you. Thank you back there.
There, you hear me?
Yeah.
Take it off if you want.
I mean, I can't.
Gentlemen and Dr. Barrera, I strongly object to your announced plans.
You can.
Let's try. To change and rescind the existing zoning law and local law number one of 2020 that designated my law office building and a lot, 189 Main Street and then the section block and lot, and a vacant lot contiguous to my office, to be one, but now designate those two properties to be R three residential zones. 189 Main Street, formerly 298 Main Street, has been used as a business use of law office since 1966, 58 years. 189 Main Street is surrounded by business usage on the north, the former Key Bank, the business use building formerly known as Grabber's Forest, and opposite my office building, My Town Market and Walgreens Pharmacy. To now make my two properties R three residential is an improper zoning act, a financially damaging act to my property interests, and inconsistent with the immediate neighborhood, harmful to the realistic growth and economic long term health of the village, and arbitrary and capricious. Note both of my properties face on Main Street. I request, as I have previously requested in writing, that these two referred to properties remain in the current designation as business uses B one, B one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Has anything new?
Just one question.
Here, here you go. It's okay.
Just pass it off to the next person.
Pain in the butt.
Gary Lox, 48 row ad. So just a quick question is, uh, for the board is if we can codify exactly what you guys are voting on, whether it's one thing, two things, three things, whether that's just a single sheet of paper for the constituents and residents here, because that may alleviate a lot of questions or, you know, answer a lot of questions. It's gonna generate a lot of questions for sure.
That's right.
But if we know exactly what's being voted on, it's probably gonna let, let a lot of clarity in.
We're coming up with that white sheet, fact sheet, bullets, bullets.
Because we usually have meetings and some people coming up and discussing the same things. I'm like, well, if we have clarity on exactly like a list of whether it's one, two, three, or 10 things, it would help. At least for me as well, so.
I agree.
Alright, thanks.
That would actually help us even more. Anyone?
I just wanna add one thing to that here. I'm a consultant to ASV. Um, the previous gentleman mentioned that it says in here that you can have, come back here, that you can have, um, residential on the first floor. It does not say that. It says it has to be 100% of the ground floor, such as, but not limited to, retail, restaurant, eating and drinking places, entertainment, office, civic, cultural, or recreation.
Recreation and residential.
And residential.
And residential use in the form of apartment dwellings and similar residential dwellings located on the floors above. That's how that is supposed to be read, the way that I read it. It's not exactly said that way in here, but that's, I think, what would help.
We're not allowing apartments or housing or bought that you own and rent on the first floor.
Right.
But maybe we have to make it clearer.
Yes. That's the point I'm trying to make, and I think that's exactly what we're trying to say. We need to understand what it is that you guys are proposing, you the mayor, because you're the one who proposed this vote, and perhaps why, I think would be really helpful. If you could explain why you're putting these things up for a vote so that people can understand.
Well, that more or less goes with what Gary's asking for, so I got you.
She just clarified.
Okay, anyone else?
Jack Jannert, resident of Highland Falls. With respect to what Mr. Copeland said, uh, here's how I see it, that their wording isn't quite right in resolution and that needs to be fixed. They're trying to, they're trying to return it back to what it was. Back to what it was, was R five started at Dale Avenue. That's where Mr. Copeland's property is, R five, and that would go down to Villa. And then from Villa South, as I see it, all the way down to Hellwood Lake would be R three. But Mr. Copeland actually would be better off in R five than in the business district. Here's why. In R five, you can put up apartments. If he were in B one, he would have to have the charade of having a business on the first floor. We already have empty lots, empty first floor businesses. Everybody who comes before us who wants to put up something in the business district says, well, I'll have something on the first floor, some commercial space, some, whatever. In an apartment, you don't need that. His property might even be worth more, his two properties, if he were in R five, which should be if we knew this right. So again, I would suggest that we, R five from Dale to Villa, Villa South to Hellwood Lake would become R three, and then south of that and around the corner would be B two. That would take everything back to where it was. And the reason I say this is just eliminating B three does not solve the problem at the south end of the vote. Because when that resolution was passed, it moved existing B two north from Hellwood Lake to Walker. I referred that to that land in the email I sent you, kind of a no man's land. If you want to put it back to the way it was before the 2020 resolution, R three should go all the way down to Hellwood Lake Road. Now, uh, again, with respect to Mr. Copeland, we are not, this resolution that's before the board now does not change the zoning from the east side of the road. The business zoning does go all the way down to that lot, section lot block, which was the former bowling alley, which we now know as Horizon Meadow. So you're not changing anything on the east side. So that's the way I see it. If you want to go back to what it was, what it was was R five, then R three down. Thank you.
Anyone else?
And we're done. I'd like to express, uh, Mr. Malphite brought up some really good ideas, but, uh, so where are we looking at when you want to do that? Basically, look at the yellow section over there, which is, uh, R four. If you want to change R four to R five and make it a multiple apartment dwelling, basically what you're looking at, highest density over there between, uh, Mountain Avenue and, what, 4th Avenue.
I didn't say make R four, R five.
You're gonna have to. You want to increase, you want to increase the density or have people build more apartments in their houses, then you're gonna have to create another zone. You're gonna have to take one zone and change it into another one. Or we can get with it.
You gotta understand. You all have been pretty, it's early yet, you all have been pretty good tonight.
I'm not yelling at anybody.
I know you're not, but I, I can't have a conversation. Your comments are for the board.
You're gonna have to read district something here in order to afford you the ability to bring that up to like an R five zone where you can have multiple family dwellings. And that brings another problem in it, in effect. Who, where are you gonna park all these people? So either you're gonna have to do the same thing, incorporate lots, make a big apartment house with parking underneath and in the rear, or you're gonna have to live with what you got. If you have accessory buildings, fine, and you want to convert them into apartment, fine, but you have to have parking. Alright, that's, so this is something that should still be taken up with what we're doing here. Not just the, uh, not just the business district. And of course, clean up the map where it's actually wrong. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sharon, if you can be, if you can speak louder, say it.
Hellwood Lake. Does anybody else think that these speakers aren't working?
You can go in there and talk about them.
So anyway, I had asked last week about how, how high the drones would be with the zone changes that you continue to, are, are proposing to make. And I had, I just came in late, I didn't get a chance to look at the map, but I'm pretty sure that I had asked last time about a balloon test to see how high it would be able to go and, you know, what my, my vision would be of my next door neighbor. And, uh, I think that should definitely be done, put into consideration about what our neighbors have to look at. So, um, secondly, I had made a comment about the water situation. Everybody wants to develop, but I suggest everybody go up there on Mountain Avenue and look at our, what was once a very thriving stream now through a little trickle. I asked for some kind of investigation on where our water has gone. And it's not just us. I've ridden around the county and, uh, it seems that all the streams are the same. And, uh, that's, that's a constant worry for me. You know, we have to pay for our water. I remember we were all on wells at one time and when the water went through, we were all excited and had the water put in and, uh, now we gotta worry about our water. And, uh, everybody wanted new development. Um, I think that should be also taken into consideration. So, that was one more thing. Anyway, I just, I think that you are not voting on these, um, zoning boards to my army zoning things tonight, so, um, I am glad that you put it kind of like in layman's terms, but still there's, I don't see anything about how high a building can go, especially in a zone next to my property. I would really appreciate that.
Is that your president?
So I wouldn't tell wood? So proposing that would be B one, is that correct? No. No. So let it.
What is gonna change back to what is on the backside of your property would be the B two, which what it was previous. And I think what you're asking for is what height is gonna be in B two, correct? And if we could do a balloon test, right?
Yes.
Alright, so one, same page, and I'll see what we can do with the.
Yeah, period.
Test behind your house, so you know what the potential would be.
Yes. No, I, yeah, I spoke to, uh, one of the guys that works at the motel, lovely guy by the name of August Davis, says that they don't plan on building there, but, you know, once the zoning is passed and the other, other end of the neighborhood gets building put up, then, uh, you know, why wouldn't they go ahead and try to do the same on my side? So that's the concern. Anyway, I really would like somebody to put some serious investigation time into this water issue.
Well, Sharon, you, you were, you, you, you said it. You said you took a ride around. It, it, everywhere it's drought. No one sold our water. There was not a leak up at the dam. There was no rain. And I, and believe me, I'm very worried about it. There's no rain. This is not the rainy season. It's not the snow season. So we, you know, we're on, we're on the verge of having a little bit of an issue. Now, we have a lot of water. Lower Bog, Lower Bog itself has 90 days worth of water in it. That's three months, Justin. That's Lower Bog. And that's very small compared to Upper Bog. So I'm worried, but I'm not gonna send up the red flag here.
Okay. So I've lived here all my life, used to go up the Mountain Avenue and hang out with all the town kids, and I have never, ever, ever seen the stream this low. So I'm saying this is not normal. I have lived through droughts here, it's put out warnings, not to worry your lungs, and still our stream was never that low. So, and there is something going on and it should be investigated, so, thank you.
Thank you. Elise, um, I thought I was closing the public hearing, but am I keeping it open till November 1st, 4:00 p.m. for comments to come in?
Yes, so you're closing the public hearing tonight with the provision that written comments will be accepted through end of day November 1st.
End of week.
November 1st.
Four o'clock, November 1st.
Okay, so.
I'd like to just address what Mr. Jack Jannert said.
Can you have to just get close to the mic? I know that's uncomfortable.
It may be, it may be, uh, some of Annell's comments as well. Now, I'm saying that the east side of Main Street, Havens Road, not be affected. The language that I read is quite clear. The ghost refers to the modification of the zoning map enacted by local law number one, 2020, to rezone portions of the building located in residential three, R three zoning district, the B one zoning district, is rescinded. All such lots shall henceforth be returned to the R three district, specifically the lots moved back to R three, including lots abutting the west side of Route 218 from Dale Avenue to Walker Avenue. That is to be changed, as I understand, with regard to Walker Avenue. And lots abutting the east side of Route 218 from Havens Road southward to and including the property identified on the Village of Highland Falls tax map as section 106 block one, block eight. Now, for me.
I'm gonna make, we're gonna come up with better language.
Quite clear.
I got it. Better language.
That, uh, they're gonna make the east side residential.
I'll address it. Thank you. So we're gonna keep, close the public hearing, keep, but then, not keep it open, but.
You'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Right.
With the provision that written comments will be accepted.
4:00 p.m.?
Till 4:00 p.m. on November 1st.
What about persons who have spoken before but may have, uh, new or additional.
I said, I said at the beginning of the meeting, if you've already spoken and they show something new, all your previous comments have been documented.
But the other members of the public might not have heard them.
Well, I'm like, I can't go through, we, this has been going on for months, months.
We're not talking about a lot of people.
Yeah, we're talking about a lot of comments.
Mr. Mayor, written comments, even if they're repetitive. Mister, Mister Mayor, written comments, even if they're repetitive, can be, can be given to the board.
Okay, anything, sure, sure.
Given to the board, okay.
Ms. Malik, last time when I was here, I mentioned a statement that was made from the committee member. Like, to me, it was not the intention, so I figured to bring in the written power. So the trustees can give a look at it.
And side to.
It feels like everything is being done on the opposite side of where our property is. Developments are happening, it's a great thing, investors are coming in, and it seems like everything is okay on that side. But anything on the opposite side, it's, it's a no-go. I just wanna find out, what is it that is holding you guys back? I know you guys made the decision four years ago, and all of a sudden after four years, you guys are going back on your words. And, you know, it, it, it takes a while in order to, you know, come up with the money and to make that type of commitment. And then, three years in or four years in, you guys start doing the same thing again where it's like, alright, that's our reason. And then you have to reach out again as investors. So what is it that changed their minds of the trustees that actually voted on making R3 for business 3, and now are rescinding the B3, I understand like it's the height and everything, but rescinding it even further down from Dale Avenue all the way to.
I think it's kind of public comment. I, I got you, and I just read that letter, and I'll read it again.
Yes, I'll read my side immediately.
In the record?
In the record.
Okay. I, I'll make a copy and give it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Malik, before you go, can I ask you, so in 2020, when that local law, I wasn't here, 2020, that local law number one was created, where they made, where your hotel is, a B3, were you aware of it?
Um, I got to know, I just like the law of the year.
So you were aware that it became a residential non-conforming lot to a B3 zone?
Yes. Right.
And you were part?
Just like the fair group.
So you were part of that decision-making, you were coming to the board meetings, you were saying, yes, that's what we want. We want this area where our motel is to become a B3, very, very dense, make it higher, make it more dense. And, and that decision was made by this board, actually, three people on this board made that decision that was advocating what you wanted to stay, correct?
We advocated, before, we at that time when you guys took the decision, we knew what was going on, but we didn't intend anything to do here. So it turned out to be, so it became B3, so we became from non-conforming to conforming, meaning now we, if you have to live in.
I, I understand, I just wanted to know if you were aware, four years ago, when the law was changed, that it was getting changed?
Yes.
You were aware, so here's the issue, the people, your neighbors, did not know that that was happening. Four years ago, your neighbors in Pellwood did not know that the zoning changed from residential non-conforming to a dense B3 zone. And they came to the board when they found out to say, we don't agree with that. And this is what part of the issue is right now, there are people who are village residents.
Actually, you had the same type of thing going on on the north end, close to West Point, where the five-story building is okay. Nobody came in or they didn't know anything about it.
Well, the Pellwood community did not know what's going on, you're right, on the, on, on that side, and they didn't know what was going on on the north side either.
The north side or the south side.
Correct.
And everything happened.
Correct.
So the only person.
It became wrong.
So the only person who's getting, you know, affected majorly is my property, and nobody else's. Or from Dale Avenue, which is Mr. Paul's property all the way down south.
No, 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 a lot of things are gonna change now, because more, it's not just you, and not just the Pellwoods, but the residential zones are gonna change as well. My issue, my, my question is, I was just trying to answer your, your question. You said, you, your question to us was, how come you wanna change things now?
Well, you don't have a good answer, because now you're saying there's still so many changes that have to be made. It doesn't make any sense.
Yes.
I know you wanna answer my question, because you still don't have any answers, so I don't know where to begin.
No, I, I know, I agree, I'm, I'm asking, I'm answering your question with another question, it makes it confusing. The question is, why does a board wanna change it now? And then I asked you a question, well, did, did you know when it was being changed four years ago? And your answer is, yes, yes, you did, you did.
I'm sure my, that's the thing is, there, when you're.
Already here, it's a non-conforming business, and that's what, their houses, they're still our property. It's only our property that is non-conforming, is not conforming.
I'm sure your other properties, that is going to, you're going to lose.
Yes, see. And you wanna keep your conforming status, correct?
Yes, it has to, it has to.
Yes, I, I got it.
I mean, if you're, if you're, if you're involved in investing, make, you know, putting money in and making money back, just like you said last time, I think you should agree that is what needs to be done, where if you have to build a hotel, brand-new one, you do that, you invest. So that you can have a beautiful property, just like you would say up north, or, you know.
Okay.
But, but I, that's the thing, where I, I don't understand where you're okay with the lots where, you know, the fair, AOG are doing it, but as soon as it comes to, you know, Walker to Pellwood, you know, it's just an opposite from, you know, that comes out of what you. I agree with you.
Don't just say, wait, wait, hang on, don't isolate me, but, uh, hang on, it's not just Walker to Pellwood, actually, so this is the thing. And I, I agree.
No, no, I'm saying, you mean, last meeting you were mentioning that, you know, a lot of investor want to invest in the north, on the north side of there, it made sense, I mean, these are your works, I'm just, it's not the same exact work, but what you mentioned was investors come in, they invest money, so they can make money back, you just can't, you know, they have to demo, you know, get rid of the buildings and make, you know, new apartments or whatever it is. But when it comes to having a newer building.
So let me address it, I, I certainly have an opinion about that, I'm sure other board members have an opinion about that as well, but I do have an opinion about it, yes, I agree.
So you don't have an opinion about it? It's a hundred.
No, I have an opinion about both, about all of it, correct? And I will certainly give my opinion.
Can I have that now?
No, I don't understand.
Donna Levy, first off, there are seventeen people living on Pellwood and Walker. Person that wrote this statement doesn't live on Pellwood Lake, lives on Walker. Do an investigation of all the seventeen families, because there is no Pellwood Lake association. Second off, what is the reason they're just splitting Main Street residential and commercial? Four reasons?
Well, there's a reason for that, yes.
Four reasons?
Okay, well, you want a business zone, and you want it limited, you don't want to dilute the business zone all over the place, that's one reason. You don't want business all around the one square mile of Highland Falls.
Why not? From nine W, when you get off the exit, all the way down to Fair?
So your opinion is?
My jar is, it's, it's a commercial.
Your opinion is to make all of Main Street business, which is what it is now.
But you're splitting it.
It's all business right now, and what?
Right, so why are you splitting it?
So you want it all to stay the way it is, is what you're saying, you want it to stay the way it is.
But that's. That's common sense. Why would you split it in half?
Yes, so, 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 hang on, why would you split it in half? Look at what the businesses are now, they're empty, and they're all spread out.
Man, what's, what's the reason for that?
There are many reasons for it.
The seven AOG properties that they bought.
Yes.
You're not allowing them to build, because you give them restrictions, correct?
That's right, I agree with you, that's not right.
But how many millions of dollars have they put into this community?
What do you mean, how many millions of dollars has AOG put in the community?
Have they put in, yeah, yes.
Well, so.
So if you buy a property, you can do whatever you want?
Correct, well, not really, within, within the rules, within the rules.
Not really. Within the rules, but you're making the rules and you're going to law.
This is what the entire, this whole town is about.
Now, you're talking about foot traffic, right? There's four classes of cadets in West Point. Let's do a thousand cadets per class, that's four thousand, that's eight thousand to ten, to fifteen thousand family members and parents coming in and out of West Point on a weekend basis. There is no restaurants, there is no motels or hotels in Highland Falls. When you ask them, they go to Fishkill, they go to Monroe, why? You want foot traffic, correct?
Yes.
So let AOG build and the other business members build.
I agree, I agree, I have been on that, I've been on that for three and a half years.
But the thing is, that you're doing is, you're putting your hands in other people's pockets.
Because you're talking about.
Because a business is that's their money, and that's their life.
Correct.
So why are you ruling it?
I am, I'm not, I've been on that for, for three and a half years.
Well, don't go forward.
I'm not, that's right.
So I'm still not getting an answer, why are you splitting Main Street?
Ask them.
First of all, I don't call it splitting, where are you going?
What?
I don't call it splitting Main Street, this is the business district up here, we don't, then it becomes residential, that's, that's just.
So the hacienda's residential.
I, I'm not saying that.
So then?
So then what?
The medical building across the street from the hacienda, that's also gonna become residential?
No, I don't think so.
So, how about the church?
How about the church?
Is that residential?
I don't think so, B2.
It's B2, yes, yes, it's, oh, it's business, it's B2, the church.
So, it's what? So then, so what, so then why are you splitting it?
You mean Mormon church?
Yeah, the Mormon church, in the corner, with the, uh, dairy moles, why is splitting it?
I think there's some miscommunication here, first of all, I think it's difficult to actually have, uh, uh, answer a question, I don't know if that's what the board intended, but I'm hearing you, okay, I'm hearing you.
It's public comment.
Uh, it's public comment, so there's somebody behind you, and I think we should hear what everybody's comments are, you're not the first person to say what you're saying, which is you want growth, you want development, you want the people who are coming in, who are investing to actually make us grow.
To be honest, the best. The best thing is for what is going to take over Highland Falls.
Well, alright, go back, go back.
I agree.
Norm and Deion, Pellwood Lake, I've heard District Two is.
Pellwood Lake, you live on Walker.
You know what, let me tell you something, Norm and Deion, I'll tell you something, you didn't like him when he first came, now all of a sudden you love him because of him.
Excuse me, quiet, please.
Norm.
I got, so I like, I like.
Really? As black.
Are you gonna talk, are you gonna talk to me, or?
Hey, you know what, these guys, well, whoever, for, okay, whoever, for the last two, said there's no such thing as a Pellwood Lake association, right?
Please.
He is racist.
This has been since sixty-two, my father started it, you can ask Sharon, then she doesn't know, she's been here five years, whatever.
Okay, okay.
Now all of a sudden she's obeying all this mouth now, when she was just against them in the very beginning.
Really?
So that's how it is.
Really?
Let her speak, yes.
That's the truth.
Kamel Malik, US Academy Motel, you should know me very well. As what Mr. Net says upon that, you know, definitely, uh, changing the zoning back to where it was is not the wise decision at this time. We have been restricted by our property, which everyone knows very well, the US Academy Motel. As an investor, not as an investor outside of the investor, we are living, this is our third generation here. We own the property, we are not coming from the outside. As long as the property stays non-conforming, if you, as you said, you are a business person, if it is non-conforming, you're not gonna be able to put money freely into the property, whether it's improvement, whether it's build more, whatever the reason comes out to. Again, people are afraid that, oh, you know what, there will be a five-story or four-story building up there, they change that to be free, or you know where it is at this time, if they don't change it back to R3, then it will be a big catastrophe. The thing is that it's gonna come in front of the world, what our passes at that time would be the ones that will be there. That does not mean that we have investment ready to just put what you call it, uh, four-story building up there right away. We want to improve the property, we can. I have a, I mean, at this time, we are going to wait for at least few more years, maybe four, five, six, ten years, I don't know, to see how the economy is going. I still have the bid to do all the black top of the property, you know, I have to put on hold, because I don't know what, what's gonna happen. It is a B3, I mean, as long as the property stays conforming, I don't have any problem. If it goes non-conforming, you can see how hard it is to be, for me to even put the smallest change to the property. Give you an example, my father tried to put a small deck in the back, the whole neighborhood was there, why are you putting it? You can't, and that was what they said, it's still not there. You think it's gonna go away, it's not gonna do it. They want us to run the business the way they want. You have to look through, I mean, you gotta get that curtain off of your eyes and look, been coming here not one day, this is not my first time here, thirty years. My father died, but you know, he, he died a happy person, you know what, because he found out that, you know, it did change the future. But, you know, I'm glad he's dead, that he's not seeing this at the start.
I'm gonna speak again, sorry, I'm going to speak again.
You guys are very dangerous.
Not good.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Jimmy, you'll be the last person, okay? Thank you.
Last week you were asked, is it legal to rent to pedophiles? I think we all were taken back by that question that was asked by the board. It always shows what kind of mindset that we're dealing with in our neighborhood. And I think the whole town and village should know that. It has nothing to do with prejudice, as was proclaimed, it has everything to do with the condition of the motels that they are now. I don't see this village, not any one of you, declining any kind of permit to any kind of upgrades in the motels as they are now. But we don't see any upgrades now, the questions were asked, why are the people going over to Fishkill and to Monroe and everywhere else? Well, open up your doors and let the public come in, and look what the conditions of these motels are. And you will find that that is the reason why people are not coming into Highland Falls to use those motels and hotels.
My answer.
Okay, thank you.
I've been living non-conforming, you can't spend much.
Ken.
Okay, I just wanna clear up a few things, uh, first of all, Jim Teal, Highland Falls. Thank you very much for hanging in there, I know, uh, you guys compete up every day, every week here. Please do not make a decision just to push this off the table, uh, to move on to the next thing. I, the way I understand it, is you're currently working on the commercial zone, and then eventually you'll move to the residential zone, I hope that is correct. As I see it, you are taking four or five of the zoning issues and collecting them and having public discussion, and possibly modifying the zoning based on a public discussion, I hope that is the case. We have water and sewer capacity for twelve hundred bedrooms, so anybody tells you that we don't have capacity, that's incorrect. Speak to the town engineer, there's been studies done. I hope we, you asked the public to come here, uh, last couple of weeks, on, on a number of times, and this has not been modified at all, this list, I understand that the intent of that is to accept public comment and then make the modifications. I just wanna make it clear that our attorney asked for a clear and concise summary of what needs to be laid out in this plan. So for any of us to point our fingers that this does not work, it's our fault, we have to look in the mirror, right, it's our fault, nobody else's. I hope we are not considering forty feet with a bonus. I hope we are not considering forty feet with a bonus, with a pipe bonus of five feet. People spoke about forty-eight or fifty feet. If we maintain the parking requirements in the north and the south end, whatever it is, one of those floors will become parking. Everybody has said, everybody, many people in this room have said that we have no room for expansion. Our expansion goes into the second floor. That's where people are gonna park. So we have to give people, business people, the ability to make money on three additional floors. So forty-five, forty-eight to fifty feet, you have to define what that height is. You have to define what that height is. Is it the parapet? Is it the top of the roof? If it's the top of the roof, then you can take a story off the building, right? That doesn't work. People talk about foot traffic. People talk about foot traffic. If we don't build, there's no place for anybody to stay. There is no foot traffic. Last week, we had a game. There was about twenty West Point families at three thirty walking up and down Main Street. What if there was two hundred West Point families or a thousand West Point families walking up and down Main Street? For what? What would they want? They'd walk to walk through an antique shop, to go for food, to go to the bar, wherever. So we have to create that environment. It's not gonna happen overnight. None of these buildings will happen overnight. It will take five to ten years to start two or three buildings. Business zone. I don't know where you're gonna stop the business zone. I know there's a conflict between the hotel and the
Public Lake Association.
That's been a long time. I don't know why both sides couldn't have found a resolution. I see, I see strong, strong points on both sides of this. But I, I, one thing I do know is we cannot stop the business district at the old Key Bank. Just look at what's there now. It's business all the way up to past Hogan's, right? The old Hogan's Field Park. So it's gotta go to at least Saturday Globe. I mean, and Old Bullitt Island. It's ridiculous to think otherwise. Where's the old Bullitt? Okay? Thank you very much.
I have a motion to close the public hearing.
With the provision that these comments will be accepted since four o'clock on the first.
Yeah, with the provision that comments can be made until four AM November one.
So move.
Second, but I do wanna make a comment. I think, I see the same cases that come to the village board meetings for the past two years. And this is the discussion that has been going on. It's about the zoning predominantly just on Main Street, from the main gate all the way to the Mormon church. Four years ago, the zoning changed for all of you. And then people started coming to us who are in residential homes on Main Street, the DAPRAS, the Town with Association, saying, when did that happen? We do not want our community to be B three or dense business zones. So this came back up again. And then AOG and other developers started coming in and saying, we wanna invest in the community, okay? So it became a topic again about business zones and residential zones. Ron, I agree with you that there are residential zone issues that need to be addressed. But actually, this, what we're trying to discuss right now is more of the business zones on Main Street. And the opportunity that new developers are bringing to us, in front of us. But for some reason, the board backed up on the 2020 law, where it actually said, yes, we want developers to come and we want it to be dense. We want it to be dense business zones from main gate to Dale Avenue. We also want it to be dense from Walker Avenue to the Mormon church. They made that law. And then they said, no, we don't want it anymore. We want it to go back the way it was. So now there's a conflict. There are a lot of residents who say there's only so much business that we want. We don't want to dilute all the businesses because look at it. It's empty. All the business, bottom parts are empty, right? There's no thriving businesses here. And now you wanna stretch it out all of Main Street. That's the issue. So we have to rethink it. And I, at least that's my opinion. So we're thinking it. I do disagree that the zoning is, the zoning is not business friendly. The way they want to put the zoning, other people on the board want to put the zoning, it's not business friendly. But we also have to listen to the residents.
Okay. I have a motion and I think you seconded it. I'll just say, don't speak, your comments, don't speak for me, and everyone else can speak for themselves. So I have a motion and I have a second. I'm sorry. So I, I don't think it's fair to say that the board does not want to be business friendly.
The primary reason, going back to the B three district, which never existed in this town. There was never a B three. There was never a B three zone. So anybody who's in the B three zone now, you were in an R three or an R district for decades. You were in it for decades. So whether you didn't know or you weren't sure, or whatever the case may be, there was never a B three. The B three came on because we were being courted by a multimillion-dollar hotel that was going in. And, you know, we see what's there now. That's okay, though. So the reason for the change is, is that we have new investors in town. We're going through similar process. And so now we're gonna, we're trying to rid ourselves of the B three, which is a planning board suggestion, by the way, and tweak the B one district in hopes that we entice the investors that have come to town now, the new folks. So it is a process. There's no cloak and dagger thing going on here, 'cause I think I kinda feel like there's a tone of that. You know, we're not trying to haphazardly, at the beginning of this process, we were told, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. It's taking you guys forever. Now it's try to do the best you can and take your time and make the right decision. So there's a lot involved here. And I think we're doing it in two parts, meaning putting the zoning back to where it was. Because we can see now that when we got into the comprehensive plan, there's a lot more involved in looking at some of these properties that might need to go commercial, might need to stay residential, may need to be tweaked a little different. But we're trying to get our bearing straight with keeping the map properly done, adjust the zoning, 'cause we have new investors here, and try to do the best we can. But it is a process. But there's no tone here of we're not business friendly. That's a bad tone to say that anybody has on this board.
Can I have a motion? I have a second. May I have a? May I?
Didn't the three of the people on the board vote to make it B three?
Yeah.
That's right. Mr. Yesalvo did that.
Yeah. Yes. It's in the minutes.
I have a motion, I have a second. May I have?
And they called it a mistake.
I didn't vote.
Trustee Garo?
Close the public hearing, yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yeah.
Trustee Desalvo?
Yes.
Mayor Tanaka?
Yes, motion carried. Alright, I have an agenda. It's not too much, but I am going to allow trustee Carol to speak. We just had long dissertations from other board members and Pete's been trying to speak. Sometimes we overroll them and we shouldn't have done that. So Pete, the floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. I don't know, you know, when I came on the board and everything, it looked to me like it looked to me that there was a lot of politics and a lot of, a lot of back and forth. And I know that you know, in the last thirty, forty years, I've watched from a distance, I wasn't involved in the political part, and I saw no progress, you know? If anything, I saw it going downhill. If you're not going forward, that's what happens. You're going down. When we got, when I got on the board and everything and found out what the AOG and the third group were willing to do, I thought that was like a godsend. That if we cooperated with them and they started improving the property and everything, it would have benefited us tax-wise. I mean, because if you take down seven hundred thousand dollar property that's being taxed and you put up a five million dollar property, that's, that's progress. That's real progress. And where are you gonna find people that are gonna care so much about Highland Falls to do that? Well, you will find it through the Association of Graduates, because they, they pass through it all the time. You know, I've talked to people saying, you know, I bring my kid up to West Point and everything for an interview and everything, and after the interview, I take him downtown. I don't think I'm gonna buy him a steak or something. There's no place to get one. You know, you gotta go to Offage's Falls or Monroe. You know, that's ridiculous. You know, thirty years ago, at least, we did have some restaurants. But things went downhill. And I don't say it was all our fault. You know, West Point, I can understand. They were trying to make West Point better. You know, I mean, we had a shoe store that probably got most of their money from West Point buying their sneakers there, whatever. You know, that went by the wayside. They started doing it in their, their PAX and stuff like that. Same with a jacket. We had shorters, men's shorts with a tie. You know, we had those little things. But once they picked off a bit of it from us, it happened. But that was just, that was just progress. We didn't, we didn't do anything ourselves to keep up with it. And here we are now with no money for the, from the village to make improvements. We need to accept them, forget about what happened in the past, and partner up with them. And we have to get the square footage done, which makes sense to a businessman who wants to invest money in this town. And we're right on the verge of it. We've been on the verge of it for the six months I've been sitting here talking with everybody. We're so close to doing it. I think that is our first step. Just get, get the square footage squared away, get that done, then get the comp plan organized and former committee to do the comp plan. That's been hanging around for four years. We need to put two people from the zoning board, two from the planning, two from the village board or whatever, and an extra person for the vote, and get that comp plan done. Those people, when you're on the zoning plan, board, or the planning board, those people have been on those boards for like twenty years. I'm just looking at who's on them. They know what they're talking about and what they're doing. It was so easy when I got here to say, you know, wait a minute. I don't know shit about developing a five-story building, you know? I have to listen to the people that do, which are the planning board people or the zoning board. So if we get a suggestion from the planning board, square footage and all the other technical pieces, we gotta listen to them. That's why, that's why they're there, you know? I'm up here on a board that's making the decision on what they know, not on what I know, you know? And I've got confidence in them. I think we ought to do everything we can to get it, the door open for the builders to start breaking ground. Soon as we can, we get that done. Then we get to the comp plan and, you know, then we'll start moving in the right direction. Excellent, Mr. Speaker.
I'm gonna move on. So a new business, we have bills and claims fiscal year 2024 and 2025. Six hundred, six hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine cents. Now I can tell you the bulk of that very, very much is FEMA, so it will be reversed. So may I have a motion to pay bills?
So move.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion counted. Except for following, you have a minutes before you from the last meeting on October the seventh. We're gonna approve them. I went over them with the clerk. I find that we change myself. I have a motion to tip a minute.
Make a motion and approve a minute.
Okay, motion by trustee Desalvo, seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but actually, I'm not feeling well.
No, I know that. I'll, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, if you can talk to me.
You need me for anything?
No, ma'am. Can you drive?
Yeah, I just need to get home.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Young man, come here for a second, please. What's your first name? Mister, I'll take her stuff and walk her out to the
Of course.
Good job, Rafi.
Yeah, he gonna take it along. There you go.
Don't worry, I won't run off with it.
Oh, we have a police officer right there.
It's all in the cloud.
He can chase me down.
Okay, next on the agenda is a resolution of the village of Highland Falls, the board trustees requesting the Orange County Legislature to exempt the property owned by the village from integral to the village municipal water system from county paying county real property taxes for 2026. We do this every year. You have a resolution and it pertains to Bog Meadow. We don't wanna pay county taxes on Bog Meadow.
I make a motion and approve the resolution.
Is there, do you have a question?
I'm just hoping that, 'cause we go through this every year, can we just let the public know that we also request this from the school? And we never get it from the school?
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Garo. Roll call.
Trustee Garo?
Yes.
Trustee Ramus?
Yeah.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Trustee Desalvo?
Yes.
Mayor Tanaka?
Yes, thank you so much. Motion carried. Okay, we have some retirements. We should accept the retirement of full-time, of our full-time DPW superintendent and our chief wastewater treatment plan operator, John Jones, effective October thirty-one, the end of this month, 2024. We need to accept that. You have the letter in front of you.
Motion?
Motion by trustee Garo. Is there a second? Second by trustee Carol. All in favor? All in favor?
I wanna say no.
Yeah, we want to.
I understand, I understand.
And I'd like to say, it's with deep appreciation
Yeah.
for John, being here for so many years.
Thirty-seven.
Too many to count. Anytime you called John, didn't matter what time in the night it was, he was out there to fix the problems in the village. His dedication is, no one has that much dedication that I know of since I've been here. So I just wanna say thanks to John.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimity accepted. So the good news is the next thing. Approve for part-time DPW superintendent, John Jones.
Is there public comment? This is a taxpayer.
No public comment.
Well, I'll bring it up at the next meeting.
You can bring up any, yeah, yeah.
I feel the taxpayer
Yeah, okay. Alright, we have a part-time DPW superintendent, John Jones. So he's gonna retire, but he's gonna work part-time, which we're clear about that for the reasons you just said. At thirty-three thousand annually, effective November one, which is the day after his retirement, October thirty-one, pending reclassification of the position to part-time, pre-approved by the Orange County Human Resources Department, which is just a formality that we have to open. So the motion would be to bring him back part-time.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have roll call?
Discussion. Okay, I think the people need to understand what is going on. So we just congratulated John Jones for having retired. Okay, and when you retire, you get quite a bit of benefits from the village, to include healthcare for you and your family, and sixty or seventy percent of your pay, is that right? What is of your pay for in the past three years averaged? Okay? For the past three years, Mr. Jones was making about a hundred and twenty thousand a year. Okay, he's going to retire and it is well deserved. And I congratulate him for that decision to retire. It's a milestone that he should be proud of. And, uh, everybody here on the board thanks him for his dedication, as do the public. Okay? But I cannot, and this is what, uh, I, I would like to explain to you. I cannot vote for him to return as a part-time DPW superintendent for the simple reason that we do not need that position, especially because as you go down this agenda, we're going to hire a DPW supervisor for eighty-nine thousand dollars a year plus benefits. So we don't need two supervisors and DPW. Okay? Um, we just can't afford to carry the salary that's being paid for by you. Everybody, everybody is stretched. Okay? You're stretched. Everybody's stretched. The real estate taxes, your home insurance, your, the cost of everything is thirty percent. Right? So to manage your money well, which you give us and we hire people for you, we should not have to have two supervisors in DPW to spend your money on. Okay, so that is why I'm voting no for him to come back as a part-time.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
Have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? I don't know, I, I don't, okay. Okay, so that's, that's, so let's see, the next one. So, uh, we have, um, our senior auto mechanic, full-time senior auto mechanic, Tim Green, is, uh, is resigning as of the eighteenth of, he did as the eighteenth of October. I think it was last Friday? Yeah, last Friday. So can we accept, uh, he has a letter here, um, thanking us for the opportunity to work here? We could accept that.
Would you accept the resignation and then hire him back for more money?
That's a, that's a discussion. See, I, I, I know that people see what you're doing. I, people are not stupid.
For taxpayers, for taxpayers, you're bleeding out. First of all, first of all, um...
Are, are you going to post these people on again?
Did he already get the job?
He's, he's resigning as the full-time...
Senior mechanic, uh, his...
Can I talk?
His wage was discussed in previous, in previous meetings.
So he's resigning as the senior auto mechanic, full-time. And we need a mechanic, so he's willing to try something. Um, he's going to work for VRI, he gets off at three, and, um, he'll come back, he'll go to the garage and work from three to whenever. It's, it's funny down there, it's feast or famine, there's either a lot of mechanical stuff actually done or, or nothing, actually.
Everything's on warranty, the culture's everything on warranty. What, what could he do with that?
One more outburst, could you, you ask him to not do the outburst anymore?
No, that's not an outburst. I think this is the problem when you turn a village board meeting into a workshop.
Did we approve Tim Green?
Instead of allowing him to speak.
Could I have a motion to approve Tim Green's resignation? Motion?
Motion. Second.
Second. All in favor?
With regret, yes.
With regret? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So like I just said, we still need a mechanic. God knows that, I wish we did, but we do. So, uh, we're going to try this arrangement out and see if it works. Um, to bring Tim Green back at a rate of forty dollars per hour starting October 22, pending preapproval by the Orange County Resource Department.
Is it the same wage you resigned at approximately? It's not, it's not, it's not. It was, it was tax law, the previous meeting.
He's out of order, so may I have a motion or?
I, I'll make the motion, but just to clarify, I mean, it's, it's a huge difference in savings.
No benefits.
So, you know, we're not doing this haphazardly, I appreciate the comments, especially by the board members. But we have a full-time person coming off the books and a full-time member coming on the books. And for the price of what Mr. Jones makes now overseeing two departments, remember that? We, we forget that. He's overseeing two departments at the price of one. For the, for the foreman's position that we're hiring and him part-time to see, see the transition over, it's less than what he's making now.
The mayor just said...
So we're getting, excuse me, sir, we're getting two people for the less money than we're paying him now so that we can transition that department over.
You're confusing the public.
They're not confusing the public, you are.
So there's going to be a surprise or...
So the motion was second. I call a question on the, on the vote.
You're making it up, but you go, uh, John.
Yeah, vote.
So, uh, okay, so a motion is on the table.
May I, may I have roll call, please?
I hope they don't get ever voted again.
No, that's right.
We're sure, we're certainly have that right.
Everything is always concerned.
That's right, Steve's path that he's in. So, uh, a discussion about Tim Green getting rehired as a part-time mechanic.
May I have roll call, please?
Well, I, I have a motion from trustee DeSalvo, do I have a second?
For the, um, for Tim Green to work part-time?
Yes, sir.
I'll second it. May I have roll call?
Okay, discussion? No, 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 not roll call. No, uh, the public is speaking to you because I agree with them. I, this is wrong, okay? I understand that Tim is resigning as a full-time mechanic to work full-time for the private company that we just hired to privatize the water and sewer company. So he's now getting hired as a full-time employee by the company that we paid to. So he's going to be full-time there. And I congratulate him for that new role. Okay, that's a great transition. But I'm really curious, how does he plan to balance that full-time job, Monday through Friday, and then continue to be a part-time mechanic for the village during regular hours? Now, you said, oh, he'll be off at three o'clock there and then he'll come to the village and work part-time in the village as a mechanic. And I will remind the public that we recently had issues with another employee, your nephew, Mr. Denofreu, who claimed that he was working on weekends, but he was improperly charging the village for overtime and he wasn't showing up. And we let him get away with that with thousands of your money. We just allowed him to...
First of all, that's not, first of all, that's not...
So now, what's going to happen? That is exactly how it happened. Oh, it had a three thousand views on YouTube.
May I have roll call?
Okay, so how are we going to make sure that that doesn't happen again?
This is on Tim Green.
Trustee Guerrero?
No.
No.
Trustee Ramus?
Yeah.
That's America, you have one job?
Ah, come on, George, please.
It's free.
Trustee Carol?
Yeah.
Trustee DeSalvo?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we're almost empty in here. So we need David Horst.
All right, big mouth, I'm, you're totally right.
All right, can you guys please stop?
That's what happens to your money, it's just they use it the way they want to.
All right.
Okay, Joe.
Remember that at the voting room.
Can we approve, if you so wish, uh, uh, public works supervisor? We need a foreman, that's really a foreman, but the county doesn't recognize that title. At a salary of eighty-nine, which is less than he's, uh, making with overtime down at the sewer plant annually. No overtime, so when he's plowing snow at night, two o'clock in the morning, and we're all sleeping, he, there goes David, he's not getting any overtime pay. Starting October the 24th, that's this week coming, pending approval by the Orange County Resource Department. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by, uh, Jim DeSalvo, who made a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, that's great. Motion seconded by Melanie Guerrero. Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Opposed?
And discussion.
Motion carries.
No, no, discussion again. You see what I'm saying? He can be a DPW supervisor. You don't need to pay John Jones DPW part-time superintendent.
I heard you say that before.
So this is the right move. Have him as a full-time DPW supervisor.
I appreciate that you made the motion. Okay, motion carries. Okay. Uh, next we have, which is, this is great, the Chamber wants to put on a best-of-car show sponsored by the Chamber on Sunday, November the fourth, that's coming up on Main Street, from noon to four.
November third.
I'm sorry?
November third. Sunday, November third, twelve to four.
Oh, it's not the fourth?
No.
Oh, it says the fourth, okay.
That's, that's my error.
I go by what, my cook is...
Yeah, my apologies.
Um, they have insurance, et cetera, they have everything that's needed, so that's all, that's good.
It's a flyer, it's...
If we can approve, uh, this...
Make a motion to approve the Chamber's car show on November third from twelve to four.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last thing is, and it came in, uh, maybe an hour before I came up here. So I don't know that you have it. Um, whereas, uh, earmarked portion of the police reserve will be used for purchase of a police car. Whereas fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents of this revenue has been designated to offset police department equipment purchases. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approves amendment to increase the appropriation budget A3120.0200, police equipment to that amount, fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents. And the revenue code A2770 miscellaneous revenue for fiscal year 2425. May I have a motion? This comes from the clerk that needs to do this to pay for the loan. You want to add anything, Jim?
Yeah, well, it needs to add in there that this is coming from reserve funds that we already have saved. So I'll make the motion as amended.
Okay. I think it's, okay.
And this is replacing the older car in the fleet, the oldest car in the fleet.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
No, uh, opposed, and discussion again, okay? You are seventeen million dollars in debt, okay? Three and a half years ago, you were only three point four million dollars in debt. There's only eleven hundred homes paying for all these taxes, the water bills, the sewer bills. You're seventeen million dollars in debt.
So let's build commercial space on Main Street. Let's build commercial space on Main Street, exactly.
I'm sorry?
Let's build commercial space on Main Street.
I agree, I agree, yes. You have aging fire trucks, you need one and a half million dollars to get new fire trucks. We have to bond for that. You are almost at your limit. You're broke.
We need motion carries.
We're broke, okay? So when you have this kind of like expense, don't say that, oh, we have reserves. Your reserves are miniscule compared to your, the level of debt that you have. So that's a ridiculous thing to say. And be responsible. So no.
I'm going to make a quick comment, no, no, I'm going to make a quick comment. Because, uh, it happens every time, boy, I tell you.
Yes, of course.
Kind of scary. If you, I would, I would highly recommend that the board members go on to the state comptroller's office, and I think there's a, there's a fleet free class on municipal budgets, budgeting, and how municipality government works. Okay, I would love to have ten million dollars in reserve. But you folks would be here with a bucket of tar and feathers.
Nobody has ten million dollars in reserves.